Trustee, has anybody heard from trustee Linum?
I don't see him across the street.
There he is, right there. Jeff, please.
Have we heard from trustee Wood this evening? When does Jeff get some, we'll get going. You there, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay.
All right. We will call to order the Village of East Dundee regular meeting dated Monday, September 28th, 2020 at 6:00 PM.
Trustee Linum?
Here.
Trustee Sallop?
Here.
Trustee Wood?
Here.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Andreessen?
Here.
Trustee Coonzie?
Here.
And President Miller?
Here. We will forego the pledge of allegiance this evening. At this point, I will open it up for public comment and any agenda items. If anybody has anything that they'd like to address on the board this evening, now would be your time. Okay, very well, saying not. We will move on to the consent agenda. We have two items there. Trustee to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda. Motion, item A, motion to approve a reduction in the required performance bond for Palumbo, Plody Mass Grading Improvement and a release of original bond. Number 268010923, held by Plody Property LLC. And item B, discussion and consideration of an ordinance closing out special service areas. Number two, number three, and four.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Catherine?
Trustee Linum?
Yes, I'm having trouble here with my computer for some reason. Yes.
Trustee Sallop?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
And trustee Coonzie?
Yes.
Very good. We have no old business, so we move directly to new business. We have four items there under consideration this evening. If we can have a motion, item A, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance in the Village of East Dundee, Cook and Kane Counties, Illinois, designating the Village of East Dundee South, Illinois Route 72, tax increment financing district redevelopment project area.
Second.
Very good. Discussion on this?
Is this something that we've already, we've already done? We're just putting the approval to the, to the TIF district here?
Yes, that's correct. This is the last act to create the TIF district, these three ordinances.
All right. I had a question on this TIF. That's maybe about this TIF in general for Jennifer. You know, my understanding, and maybe it's wrong, is that TIF money can only be spent improving the TIF that it's in. Is that, is that not true? Can we do neighboring TIFs? Is that how it works?
We, yes, we can use money in adjacent TIFs. So the money can be moved to an adjacent TIF, and all of the village's TIF districts are touching.
Those contiguous TIFs, not like adjacent, it's contiguous. As long as like, it could be five TIFs away, but as long as they're touching somehow. It's like playing Risk. I mean, welcome.
Yeah, there, I mean, you still have to show, there's a lot of documentation you have to do within the TIF report. And we typically show things as due to and due from. The only time where we don't show it as being a debt that's owed to another TIF is if there was money set aside in a TIF to pay down a debt obligation. Like if the board decided to use that, a debt, like some project they were completing, that this debt would owe a portion of that debt, then, then that wouldn't be shown as a due to by otherwise. We do track it, and we show that if the TIF that recovers and has borrowed money from another TIF is able to, then they are able to pay the other TIF back. So it, at least it, it is tracked, Scott, for which TIF owes what TIF, how many dollars. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. Okay. I just wanted to see, because I know this is a very small TIF. If we were locked into that area, it would be difficult.
Yeah, and just, you know, I guess the way to explain this is, our very first TIF was Prairie Lakes, which was all new developments. Obviously, it kicked off a lot of TIF funds for the village. And we could use that to port to the downtown area, which really had nothing, because all the buildings were existing. So we could use that to jumpstart the economy of the downtown.
Okay.
That's the essential reason why it's done that one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Danae? Catherine?
Trustee Linum?
Yes.
Trustee Sallop?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
And trustee Coonzie?
Yes.
Okay, very good. That takes us on to item B. If we have a motion on this, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance in the Village of East Dundee, Cook and Kane Counties, Illinois, approving the South Illinois Route 72, tax increment financing district redevelopment project area redevelopment plan and project.
Second.
Very good. Discussion? Catherine?
Trustee Linum?
Yes.
Trustee Sallop?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
And trustee Coonzie?
Yes.
Good. Takes us to item C. If I can have a motion on this, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance in the Village of East Dundee, Cook and Kane Counties, Illinois, adopting tax increment financing for the South Illinois Route 72, tax increment financing district.
Second.
Good. Discussion? Catherine?
Trustee Linum?
Yes.
Trustee Sallop?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
And trustee Coonzie?
Yes.
Okay, very good. That takes us to item D. I believe this was updated. Is there an ordinance attached to this at this point?
I'm sorry, Leo, could you repeat that?
Yeah. Item D initially on the agenda did not have an ordinance, but this has an ordinance attached to it. Is that correct? Not just this discussion, but it would also be?
Yeah, it's actually just for discussion. I just had present the changes to the outdoor dining. And they've been amended just to waive the tent fee permit and put in a few tent regulations as we head into winter here for outdoor dining.
Okay. Do we need a motion to open this up, or just discussion?
No, it's, it's really just a report. So it's in your packet, but if you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Yeah, I've been talking to a number of the downtown businesses, trying to get them to prepare for what's going to happen this winter. And of course, everybody's going to want a tent. All the tent rental companies are already starting to get backed up. The propane charges are going up, everything's going up. So I, you know, I know it doesn't sound like much, but I'd rather just waive the $50 fee to these people and help them wherever we can. So, you know, unless anybody's got any concerns about that. But I do want to make sure that Chris and Building Department gets out there, make sure that everything, you know, that they still have to do a permit, because I want to make sure that everything's done safely. So that was my goal on this. I hope you understand.
Are you seeing a lot of interest in it at this point? Or are we kind of ahead of the curve?
Well, I wanted to get this out to them as fast as possible. I did have, I've had discussions with Alianos, with Mockingbird, and with River Street. And all of those are interested in putting up a tent. I don't know if anybody else is at this point. I'm assuming Diamond Gyms is going to try and put something else up there, too. But they have plenty of room. They don't have the issues that some of their neighbors do. So some of these are going to be a little challenging to walk through. River Street, for example, the only place they could put it would be where they currently have the street parking.
All right.
So, and Mockingbird has limited space on their east side. They have more space on the front. So there, there are some logistical challenges. I just want to try and, you know, whatever we can do to these people to keep them afloat.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to it, just curious to see what that level of interest was, if there wasn't a yet.
It's going to be odd watching this all across the state, because there's a lot of people that are going to have to do something like this. Wish I was in the tent rental company business at this point, but.
Yeah, we just tried to get a the outdoor heater, propane heaters. And they're all backordered till, coming straight from China until the middle of November, it'll arrive. So.
Challenging here. Okay.
Financial. I was wondering, off the fly here, if the idea is to be outdoor, because you're going to have a wider airspace to, you know, spread your germs or whatever. Putting people in a tent, how is that going to be better than just having them inside the restaurant?
Well, there's two issues here, and that's, that's a very good point. Kathleen at Mockingbird has talked to some of her customers, and they've expressed that they really don't want to be in a tent. They'd rather be in some kind of a pergola, perhaps it could have a wind curtain on one side, but they would feel safer doing that than they would being inside a giant tent. Having said that, the, the other logistical nightmare is that out of the 25 people that she would normally be able to seat on the inside, she's probably only going to be able to get eight. Due to, whether it's, you know, two things, you know, you look at the 25% capacity, or you look at how safely can you space people out, six feet or 10, eight feet.
So what we're saying is that it's going to be both. It's going to be in the tent and inside. This is just to make more seating space available in the grand scheme of things.
Correct. Yeah. Some of these smaller places are really going to have a hard time being able to operate at 25% capacity. So if they can do 25% there and 25% outside.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Leo, it's Kirsten. I have a question regarding follow-up inspections of heating devices inside these tents. Do we have any plans to have Chris or any of the public works or inspector people go out to ensure that the heating devices that are under these are still going to be, are maintaining the proper distances and all that? Only because I know that obviously things get moved around and weekends are busy and that kind of stuff.
I hadn't thought of that, but I don't see why we can't.
I just think it might be to our benefit to just put them on a schedule, if we can. If we have consistently, you know, outdoors or tented dining spaces throughout the winter, it might just be something that would be in our best interest to have, you know, periodic inspections done just to make sure they're maintaining that.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't anticipate that there's going to be a vast quantity of these things in our town. So, you know, if we, if we have four of them, I'd, I'd be surprised, although, you know, who knows? Carol's corner, Carol's corner.
Right, right.
I don't know.
Okay, just a thought.
We'll put that on the list. We'll, we'll talk to Chris about that and see that we do that. Okay, financial reports. You have your 2020 July monthly financial reports and the warrants list in your packet. I, I don't really have a report tonight, but I just did want to see if I could share something with you. And I'm going to try this. The first time I've done this where I do a share screen. So let's see, do I have to have the? How do I do this?
I can add, well.
You're make a co-host.
Okay.
Okay. Try, try to see if you see an option now, Leo.
Oh, no, I see an option. I'm just trying to figure out how I get the, oh, here we go. Okay, got it. Never mind. Okay. Do I see? Oh, here we go.
There we go.
All right, so. Can you see that?
We just see the header of the, of the program, it looks like.
Okay. Probably practice on somebody before I try this live, but whatever.
We've all been there.
There we go. All right, let's try this. I'm sorry if I'm wasting your time here. Do it. I've got a choice of a spreadsheet or desktop one. Does it matter for any? Catherine? Let's try this. Nope, still the wrong one.
I've never shared personally. I know Scott Coonzie did one. Maybe he has a.
Leo, are you on multiple screens? Do you have multiple screens right now?
I have lots of screens open all the time. All right, you know what? I, I won't, I won't bother wasting your time with this. I'll just explain what I'm talking about.
There you are.
When I look at the numbers in the local communities for just one more try, I guess. I'm going to try and do desktop one. There we go. Can you see that?
Much better.
Got it. So what I do on a daily basis is I go through all the Kane County raw data and do a bunch of spreadsheets, pivot tables, things like that on the data. And one of the things that I've been looking at lately is I, I basically modify the report date of when the case has been reported and break it down into months, which I think is a lot easier for people to, to understand and look at. So I want you to take a look at the graph on the bottom. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so March, April, May, not good. June, July, hey, we're doing great. August, everybody forgot what the heck was going on. And here we are with, you know, several days left in September.
Now, these are new cases in each month, Leo, are they?
Yes.
Okay.
These are not cumulative. Don't look at cumulative numbers. It means absolutely nothing. Numbers is always going to just look like it's going straight up. But what you can do here, too, and I'll share this with anybody that's interested in this. I can add anybody on here and look at groups. So for example, there's West Dundee, basically the same thing. If I add Algonquin, there's Algonquin, same thing. If I look at Sleepy Hollow, same thing. If I go look at, you know, any of the towns around us. So I know that the numbers, I'm from Hampshire on here. Same thing. Right? We were doing good. We were doing great. Things were getting better. June looked good. July came, not so much. August, oops. So I want you to keep that under consideration, that this is what's happening locally. I know that the numbers are kind of doing eh, in, in Illinois. They're not doing too badly in Kane County overall. But I want to show you something really scary. So here's East Dundee and West Dundee, just to give you a comparison, right? August, you look at West Dundee, they're double what they were in July. Right now, they're exactly tied for September. So those are our nearest neighbors. I want to show you something that I can do on here that should scare the heck up out of everybody.
And there goes the graph.
Yeah, I showed Scott this the other day. Okay, so I'm going to add Carpenter'sville and Elgin, because I would say that they're our next nearest neighbors. Would you agree?
We disappear.
Shit.
I stuck her motion.
Yeah. And if you could see the numbers on the top, that represents a total of 4,375 cases.
What are we trying to do here?
Well.
I'm not really sure.
Because I, I'm, I'm trying to express my opinion on this, and it's not really an opinion. These are facts. That things are not as smooth sailing as I think that some people think they are. That things not, aren't getting better. They're actually getting worse. The death counts are down. And if you look at the ages, the age count is down, too.
I don't think that's true, Leo. I think that's a really, really
These are, these are.
Very misguided statement.
Hey, let me finish, Jeff. These are the facts that are coming out of the.
Okay.
Right? These are hospitalization numbers and all kinds of other things. So as we get into winter and things start, you know, people start behaving differently. I just want people to know that we, locally, we're on the wrong end of the trend. Things aren't getting better.
I, I don't, if you take a look at those numbers that you just showed for East Dundee, those East Dundee numbers are not only in, in line with statewide numbers and, and actually much better. They're right in line with national numbers. It's less than 1%.
Well, don't say the 1%. If you're saying we're the same as, as the state of Illinois, then the state of Illinois' numbers doubled from last year to the, or last month to this month. That's not true. They didn't double between July and August. They didn't double between August and September. So I, I just want to point out that when I look at the raw numbers, this is what I'm seeing. So, you know, now is not the time to let your guard down, and I'm just going to let it at that. So we'll go on the board and let everybody else say what they want to say. So Village.
Leo, can I jump in on that real quick? Now, the village has done actually an excellent job, I think, of putting out information, putting out stuff to the business owners. I think Leo and Jennifer and Brad and the whole crew has actually done a really good job. And matter of fact, as a business owner in town, I've used a lot of that information. I assume we're going to continue our, kind of our educate.
Yeah. We just lost you, Scott. We lost your audio and video. Well, I'll, I'll get back to you in a minute. So let's, let's start with the board. Dan?
No report.
Oh, good. Scott Coonzie?
Well, the depot looks great. Good job, Jeff.
It's getting there.
I did share a couple of pictures of you on Facebook, and it got a tremendous response, just seeing.
I heard, but I can't, I haven't been, somebody told me about that. And actually, Jamie Dunn at Rosie's told me as well yesterday, and I, I still haven't been able to find it. But it's not a big deal. I'll keep looking.
It's hard to find things on the internet.
Especially when you don't know tech.
I had a question on the financial report. I saw noted on there that we charged $38,000 for a permit. I, I, is that true? Is this not for a permit? That's for some actual service that we provided, right? We're not charging $38,000 for permission.
Can you, can you direct me to what page? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Let's see here. It was in the financial report, for sure.
Okay.
Didn't have it right up.
As part of the warrant or the?
No, no, no. It was in the actual report.
Oh, in the actual monthly report?
Yeah.
It's page 93 of the packet posted online. It was the building permit for one cut above the rest.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I, Chris is not on the phone, so I'm going to have to get back to you for more accurate update on what that involves. But there was most likely connection fees also. So the permit fee is based on, it's a percentage of the scope of work, the construction cost that they give us as part of their proposal that they've accepted for work. And then often water and sewer connection fees and at times impact fees, although I don't think that would imply.
I mean, that's, it is an existing building. I mean, so it seems strange that we would have that many connection fees for a building that's already existing, unless they're redoing a lot of sewer. And I know that there were water issues with that building. Maybe that has something to do with that.
And they have an addition proposed also, so I'm not sure if this permit fee is also for the second story addition that they were planning or not. So I'll have to, I can get back to you on what makes up that permit fee. I'm not sure.
Okay. And then for George. George, I noted in your report about a person that was, you know, not feeling great, maybe possibly suicidal. And I'm just wondering if you've had any conversations with the township? We passed a referendum this last election to add, you know, a township level me, uh, mental health board. I don't know if that's up and running yet even, but I don't know if you've, if you've had any conversations with them about that.
I have, and I, I've expressed to them that I strongly support their work. They're in the preliminary stages, and I had a lengthy conversation with one of their members. But it, it's in the early stages right now.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would imagine it is, but I guess, I, I mean, it's good to hear that you're talking to them. You know, I just want to make sure that that, that connection is.
God, more than talk, I strongly support them, and I will help them in any way possible, and I convey that to them.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Trustee Mahoney?
Yeah, I was, wanted to welcome George back and also have a question for him with regards to the incident last Saturday with the two, involving the two police cars.
I was going to talk about that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, you can cover it in your report then.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted an update on that and what the cost would be to the village that we're looking at. And if, and it seemed like everybody was okay. None of the police were injured.
That's correct.
Okay, that's my main concern. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Linum?
Just a couple of things really quick. One, Scott already mentioned depot's coming along. I need a couple more days on that. Do the soffits, the gutters and the roller work on that. The other two items were ones that I mentioned last week. I'd just like to touch base on them again as maybe a discussion on a four-way stop at Railroad and River. The observation that I've been doing there is that everybody who's headed south or north, I should say, on River stops at Railroad, and I think it's instinctive. It is for me, and I've done it every time. But they don't realize, I think people just don't realize that there's, there's not a stop sign there on River. So I was thinking that maybe we might want to consider putting one in there. Also, too, it's been raised by a couple of different residents, the idea of a no turn on red at River and Main, right there at Dairy Queen. You know, especially during the summer months, when people are, when they, you get the green light, a lot of times people don't realize that, you know, the bicyclists get, get the, the right of way there. And I've seen people go ahead and proceed through to the intersection only to realize, whoa, they have to stop. And so that's something that I think we might want to discuss. And then also, the other thing was the Flood Brothers dumpster at the.
Fireman's Park.
Fireman's Park there, yeah. If we could somehow either get them to move it, maybe put up a barrier, something. But when you're going north on North Third there, man, it, it really is like, it's kind of a dismal view. And it, it doesn't need to be. And it, it does Fireman's Park no good as far as aesthetics. So if we could just talk to them, I don't know if it's something we'd have to get, you know, the okay on with Flood Brothers to move out of sight a little bit, but I'd like to see us do that.
Very good.
That's all I have.
What is that dumpster used for?
For a good question.
People that are renting out the pavilion across the street there.
Yeah.
So a, a barrier to hide the dumpster would be on the people that have the park. Wouldn't necessarily be on Flood Brothers.
Yeah, correct. That, that would be.
Right, we'd have to talk to the fire department, most likely, because I'm assuming that, that restroom area, that little building is a part of the park owned by the fire department. So, yeah, we'd have to talk to them.
Yep. Okay, very good. Trustee Andreessen?
I finished my comment earlier. First of all, Jeff, nice job on the depot. It looks a lot nicer looking out my window now as I sit here.
It's getting there, bud.
Yeah, I mean, even though I don't really enjoy looking at you, your backside on a ladder all week. At the end, pun intended.
I'll work faster.
Or just face the other way or something. Um, as far as my earlier comments, yeah, I, I think we really need to be diligent about our education, because, you know, based on what I've seen, read, or heard, or whatever, it looks like this, the spread of this now is more towards the, the younger people in bars, restaurants, gyms, things like that. And I think it's easy to either A, just get sick of being careful, or B, just kind of forget. Like, you know, people tend to get a little bit maybe less diligent than they need to be. And I'm, you know, especially now with cold and flu season coming in, where you're going to get these comorbidities. And it's just, it's just better safe than sorry. So, I mean, if the village could kind of stay on top of like the ongoing education and.
I appreciate that. You're, you're dead on with your comments. I mean, the, the age bracket that I'm saying has the majority of increases, the 18 to 29-year-old. You know, there's still 40s, 50s, 60s, 80s, whatever that, that are there, but they're, they're not as much. The medical profession seems to have been doing a much better job of treating these people, because there's, there's less deaths, obviously. But, you know, the, the flip side to that is that this month alone, we've had somebody that was three, four, and 10. That's not something that we've been seeing a lot of. So, you know, the whole thing about little kids can't get this, little kids can get this. And if it's on this report, these are not necessarily people that are getting it, and, you know, some are going to get sent home and quarantined, but, you know, some of these are going to get admitted. So, yeah. Okay, anything else? Scott, anything else? Nope. Okay, Village Administrator?
I just have a couple of items. Thank you. I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that President Miller reassessed with sending out a message about Halloween. So neither encouraging nor discouraging, just giving, passing along the CDC guidelines that came out and recommend, reminding residents that it is a high-risk activity, but making some recommendations on how they can participate by putting their porch light on or off, whether they're not going to be participating in that event. So we did do that. We put that out, I believe, today in the depot life, because that is something that a lot of municipalities are getting questions about and people are talking about. getting questions about and people are talking about. But luckily, the CDC did come out with guidelines. So, that was helpful in the conversation. We also have some big news going on this week as a reminder. Brad, if you're able, can you give the board a little update on what's going on this week in the IT world?
Yes. So, we have our deadline to switch over our IT services is this Wednesday. We have Helping Hand will be on site Wednesday doing the cutover of all our IT services. After that point, we'll be solely with them and no longer with West Dundee. I did send out an email to all staff, and I believe the board was on that email as well on Friday, giving a heads up on this cutover and what we're anticipating with the changes and kind of foreshadowing, you know, some disruptions coming up on that day with the cutover. They're gonna be on site and address any issues that come up, you know, as fast as they can. We've been working to give them as much information that they need to be prepared for this. So, I anticipate a smooth transition, but there will be disruption specifically Wednesday. There might be some internet downtime, just some down, switch over our email to Microsoft. Excited for this change as of Wednesday. If you experience any issues on Wednesday, I will be at Village Hall Wednesday and potentially Thursday. So, I'll be around to get that message to Helping Hand and get things fixed right away.
Good. Yeah, I would-
Brad, Brad, it's Kirsten. How is our, how will our email be affected by that as far as-
Hi, Kirsten.
Will we get a new link? How is that gonna work?
Yeah, you'll get a new, you'll get a new, we'll send that information on new remote login to Microsoft Office from home. So, we'll be putting that information out on Wednesday. And Helping Hand will be able to directly contact you if you need, you know, the walkthrough to put that on your phone or, you know, computer. But it should be a smooth transition. All the emails that are currently in your email box now should transfer. They may not appear on Wednesday, all of them. But within a few days, they anticipate getting all emails transferred over. We're going from a pretty antiquated system to Microsoft Office. So, there's some challenges there. But they're hoping for a smooth transition of the emails. But we'll put out the information on how you access your new email through Microsoft Office.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, once the emails are transferred over, and I understand that takes a while, at some point in time when we know that we're successful, successfully ported all that, is part of the procedure to make sure that we go wipe all the servers that were over at West Dundee that had any information?
Correct. So, yes, Helping Hand has been instructed to wipe out all of our information from their servers or whatever information they have access to. So, we're gonna work closely with Helping Hand to make sure that destruction takes place. And they do not have access to our emails or any of our files that going forward.
Good. Thank you.
I just wanna mention, thank you, Brad. I also wanna mention a couple other interruptions would be the website. So, our website is actually just pages on the West Dundee website. The platform that West Dundee has proposed for us to continue our website, our existing website for a period of time are really favorable to the village. So, we do have a temporary website that Revise has put together for us where we'll be able to post agendas in minutes. It's gonna be very light. We're gonna use our Facebook primarily in our depot life. But we will keep our temporary website in place for mandatory postings and such as we complete the rollout of our new website. So, the website will be different. Again, if you have any interruptions or if you need us to send you something in a different format, if email isn't working for a while, we'll be happy to do that. Anything that we have to do. But I can't stress enough, we anticipate some failure or complication. So, just please be patient. We are changing our agenda program. Also, we're just moving to Adobe. So, we're gonna have little hiccups with that. And we're gonna have little hiccups everywhere. But just be patient. We'll get through it. And I think we'll be great coming out the other side. So, thank you for your patience.
Do we have any idea how much these little hiccups are gonna cost in addition to the $86,000 that we put out for this new system?
Oh, I guess I didn't mean increase in cost. We did anticipate the cost, and that's what was approved by the board as part of the expenditure. So, I guess I just meant inconveniences. I anticipate some inconveniences.
Okay. I mean, we're still at the $86,000 for this whole new system, correct?
Um, yeah, I believe we, the board approved a expenditure up to $80,000. And I guess Brad could speak within that. But we've been monitoring the budget. And yes, we expect to be under budget.
Okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, somebody that's ported over multiple software domains, even on a global basis sometimes, I could tell you, there's always something that doesn't work in the middle of the night and something that doesn't work. But yeah, also, somebody who's a previous IT director for software companies, your contract is your contract. You don't have something fall apart in the middle of the night and then charge somebody to fix it. That's all part of the package. So, that's how you build your relationship with your software company is, is going through, going through the fire this week and coming out the other side clean. So, thanks for all your work getting this done. I know it's a lot of work.
I, I'm just concerned we are approving $80,000. And then at the end of the month, we're gonna be at $180,000. So-
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the last item I have is the Village Board meeting is regularly scheduled from a week from today. So, I do anticipate, unless there's something very urgent, we would not have that board meeting, just because this one is so late in September. So, I just wanted to report on that. And so, it would either be the second October or the third October, Monday in October. Unless anyone has anything for me, that's all I have.
Very good. Village Attorney?
Thank you. No report this evening.
Very good. Village Engineer?
I have no report.
Very good. Chief?
I'd like to refer to Trustee Mahoney's question. 10 days ago, on a Saturday morning at about noon in the morning, two of our officers were on Route 25 by the Milk Pale. And they had a suspected drunk driver. And they had him out of the car side of the road, and they were doing the field sobriety tests, when another drunk driver, unrelated, creamed the back end of one squad car and pushed it into the other squad car. The dash cam didn't catch the collision because it's focused forward, but it does show their reaction. And they all moved very quickly to make sure that they weren't hit. So, the status of the squad cars is, one of them is totaled. The other, Brad, I don't know, was it declared total or not? Do you know the second squad car?
Yes, I believe it was declared total as well.
Okay. The status is that tomorrow morning, we're towing one of the cars up to Crystal Lake for removal of all the things that they installed. Ultra Strobe installs the emergency lights, the laptop computer, the dash cam, the cage in the backseat, all kinds of things that they're gonna have to remove. We do them one car at a time. First car will be done tomorrow.
Was the asphalt driver insured?
Well, thank you. The report was taken by the Kane County Sheriff's because we're unincorporated. And the drunk driver apparently knew that he was in front of the pilk mail, which I can't even say when I'm sober. I don't know how it rolled off his tongue. I don't, I don't know the insurance status offhand. Brad, would you have an idea about that? Have you dealt with them?
Yeah, you know, we submitted all the paperwork with them, and they're going through that right now to determine, for sure.
But neither, neither-
Coverage.
Their insurance pays or our insurance pays. This isn't-
Correct.
Our insurance is sending us a check right now for the first car, $31,500, I believe it is.
We will be inevitably, we will be out most primarily, most likely will be out some funds. It depends if the coverage is a combination of the driver's insurance and the village's insurance as a supplement. The total value of the cars is significantly less than the full replacement cost. But unfortunately, this was the 2020 vehicle and the 2017 vehicle. And they're significant and very important to our fleet. So, I have instructed the chief to go ahead and proceed with those purchases because they take a significant amount of time. And then we will be preparing a report to provide you with, showing you whatever, if any, out-of-pocket costs that there are. But if, if our insurance doesn't act like as a supplemental insurance, we may be out in this, just as anybody would. The value of the car goes down, and they're only gonna give you the value. I think the second vehicle, they're giving us $14,000 or $16,000. So, I do know that when we purchase a vehicle, we budget about $42,000. So, that just shows you the difference of what we're working for. But the good news is no one was hurt. And that's why I'm focused. And, you know, that's all we can do.
Thanks, insurance companies. Okay, anything else, Chief?
That's, that concludes my report, Leo.
Very good. Public Works, Phil? I'm sorry?
No report this evening.
Oh, nice. Very good. We don't have anybody from Building or Finance that I'm aware of? Am I missing something? Okay, very good. At this point, I'll ask for public comment on any items. We have anybody from the public that would like to address us this evening? Seeing none?
President Miller, can I say one more thing? I'm, I'm sorry. I forgot an important part. And seeing Phil reminded me of that. The leaf collection program, so the board directed us to proceed with the leaf collection program at the budget time. So, Director Cotter has been working, and he worked with Brad. And they sent out a message today about the, an introduction to residents about how this will work. So, you blow or rake your leaves onto the curb. We're gonna come and suck them up. And there's gonna be no increased costs to the residents. It's included in the budget. But further details on when the collection periods will occur will be coming up. But it's a big change. This is a big change, and it's a, it's a good service for our residents. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
And do we know when they'll be starting?
Phil, do you have an idea of when they're gonna be starting?
We're looking at probably the second, third week of October. So, mid-October, it should give or take a couple of days.
Good.
I think when we, we got that quoted, it was only, they were gonna come out only two times. Is that accurate? Or is, is that been updated now tomorrow?
Right now, we're looking at, I've been discussing the possibility of four collection events.
Okay.
Starting in mid-October through the end of November. So, we'd likely have a collection event that week following Thanksgiving. So, like that, that one final cleanup.
Nice.
We need to push it into December because I got a really big tree in my front yard that never loses its leaves until after the first. So-
All right.
I would agree with Trustee Lyman on that. The one thing I found in every municipality is the last leaf collection gets pushed every year. So, I actually agree.
And I think, I think last, the, the last day that they were gonna collect the bags was even too early for me, for my trees. So, yeah, I agree.
Well, I don't actually have any trees. I have village trees, but they start dropping the last week of July. So, then we have to push it all the way back to there, too. So, I don't think this is-
It takes.
I don't think this is gonna be a one-size-fits-all argument, but at least they can start. I think that's a big improvement for the village. All right. Okay. We have no executive session this evening, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Done, moved.
Not good.
Very good. Catherine?
Trustee Lyman?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen? Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Cooney?
Yes.
And President Miller?
Yes. Okay, guys, go watch football or something. We'll see you next week.
Good night.
Take care.
Bye-bye.